I'd like to call the Butte Silver Bowl Council of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, July 16, 2025, to order. Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Nine present, three absent.
Nine present, three absent. Please note that Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Mankins, and Commissioner Anderson are absent from tonight's meeting. Commissioner Walker, could you lead us in the prayer and the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move on to any public comment on any item on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, please come forward, state your name, address, and the item that you'll be speaking on. Okay, there's a, there's a button that'll turn, you'll see, it'll turn red. There you go.
That's on.
Yep, you got it. Oh, you turned it off. You just, you just shut it off after you did that. Yep, you got it.
Okay. I am here tonight to speak about communication number six.
Ben, please give us your name and address.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, my name's James Madison, 116 West Silver Street, District 10. And it's in regard to communication number six, the urban camping. And we live in the Emma Park, or I live in the Emma Park area. And the past year has just been ridiculous with urban camping. And camping, urban camping, I'm all for it. Everybody has the right to do it. But there's gotta be some rules. There's nothing stops anyone from pulling up from any, your front, there's nothing stopping anyone from pulling up in the front of your house, pitching a tent and start, and camp out there. They may have to move their vehicle every 48 hours, but that could just be rolling forward five feet. They're parked, they're camped around the parks. One young lady down in South Dakota had someone, complete stranger, park in the front of her house all summer. Two, two and three in the morning, he'd get up and cough and hack, and she didn't need that. On the routes to school this year, there were folks camped on the sidewalk. School kids couldn't make their way to school. Butte Silver Bow has a lot of land. I think it's the land richest county in the state. Surely, we can figure out where urban camping is okay to do it, to avoid conflict, and where it's not okay to do it. In front of people's houses, probably not a good idea. Outside of a school, not a good idea. Across from a park, not a good idea. My wife goes down to the dog walking trail. Well, there's someone camped in that compound there. She doesn't feel safe. Do you, would you guys feel safe? Would you guys feel safe for your wife, daughter, husbands, kids to go to those trails and try to recreate with someone camped out there? There's no sanitary facilities. It's just something needs to be done. So, like I said, camping's fine, I'm all for it. Just there's a place and a time for it. And there's places that it's not, shouldn't be allowed. So, I hope, I hope we can start the communication and get something going here to come up with the ordinance, like all the other communities are coming up with. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Is there any other public comment on tonight's agenda? Please come forward, state your name.
Dave Hutchins, 529 South Colorado. I'm also here to talk about the communication 374, the urban camping. And first of all, I think that's a euphemism. I don't think we're talking about urban camping, we're talking about homelessness. I also live in the Emma Park neighborhood. I have a couple folks on my block that are urban camping. They don't choose what the, the life that they have right now. They are struggling with poverty, with mental health issues, with other things. I don't think the urban camping is really what we're talking about. Nobody's complaining about the $80,000 Sprinter vans. And so, I'd like to be real about what we're talking about. We're talking about homelessness. And I think we don't need to pursue this sort of a regulation. What we need to do is enforce existing laws. We need to provide mental health care. We need to provide affordable housing. We need to provide dignity with things like public restrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. Is there any other public comment on tonight's agenda?
Hi, guys. Mike Sheehy and I live in 423, also in the Emma Park area. My cousin Bill's here to save the day, so we'll all be short. But I gotta echo what Dave just said. We don't, you know, we don't want to make criminals out of people who are down on their luck. And the rent is too damn high, frankly. So, there must be a solution to help people that, that are, you know, that are trapped in a, in a, in a unhoused situation. And I, I don't have any quick answers for it, but I know that it's getting worse. Not, not only here, but around the country. So, the only thing, you know, there's some, we're big gamblers and we're big weed smokers. Somewhere in that pot of money, maybe we could build a hobo jungle, you know, that would create a place people could end up for, you know, overnight, a couple days, whatever it would take to, to ease the pain of being homeless. So, thanks for whatever you do. I, I never read the, the proposed ordinance, so I, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what, what you're gonna vote on, but, but I'd, I'd be in favor of anything that would help people, you know, survive this economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehy.
My name's Rusty Estrobrooke, live at 313 South Dakota. I'm here also about the urban camping. My biggest concern is there's no enforceable rules to move anybody along. In the last year, my 100-plus phone calls to law enforcement in regards to people being on my porch, going through my garbage in my backyard, has resulted in a criminal bunch of individuals that hung out, hang out in Emma Park, targeting, targeting me in front of my children, threatening to burn the house down with the kids in it. Like I said, no enforceable rules just allows them to live there. We make a complaint about no light in the gazebo. Well, they turned the power off, so it would shun people from staying. They live in the gazebo. Now, there's no light, you can't see them. But, uh, yeah. No enforceable rules leaves everybody in our neighborhood subject to people that are down on their luck, homeless, whatever, by whatever means, they, they're there, and we have no means to get rid of them. And calling the police, their hands are tied. They have, they can move them along, they come back five minutes later. Or they say, you can't be in the park because of the rules. They stand on the corner, on the public sidewalk, and camp. They're not in the park, so the police can't do anything. Anyhow, that's my spiel on this, and I hope we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estrobrooke.
I'm Pete Holquist. I have PNM transmission up at A10 East Iron Street. There's a serious problem with the, the campers up in that area. People were dumping off campers and motorhomes up there for quite a while, and recently, a, a mobile home. Every one of them's been burned to the ground. The police have been up there several times moving these people along. We just recently cleaned up two of the campsites and returned their shopping carts to the stores where they were stolen from. When the guy that lived across the street confronted three, three guys that were staying in that mobile home, two hours later, it was on fire. That, that kind of stuff has been happening up there for a long time. If we confront anybody, they start breaking windows out of cars up there, breaking into the, the Fickler's Old Building. They started a big fire in the basement of that a couple years ago, and we confronted them when they were going over their fence. So, we just stopped confronting these people. But they're there all the time. There's still a couple of people up there camping. They have no place to go, so there needs to be an ordinance in some area set up for these people to be at. They can't be scattered out all throughout the town, because they're committing crimes everywhere where they're at. They have to support themselves somehow, and they're doing that by stealing. So, whatever can be done, be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 1, 2025 special meeting and July 2, 2025 regular meeting.
We have a motion on the second to approve the minutes from the July 21, 2025 special meeting and the July 2, 2025 regular meeting. Is there anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine ye, zero ne.
Nine ye, zero ne, motion passes. We don't have any items that are not addressed on tonight's agenda, and so I'd like to just kinda, on the chief executive's report, give a little update on some things that are going on in the community. First, the Animal Services Board will be having a, a meeting on Tuesday, July 22, at 4:30 down at the Health Department, and they will be discussing urban chickens and, and lot size. So, for those interested, if they're online or in, in the audience here, that will be, again, Tuesday, July 22, 4:30 PM, at the board, our conference room down at the Health Department. Ken, I want to talk about Folk Festival. What an amazing event again this, this last year. You know, give credit to George, Tom Staples, Bernie, and, and their team, and of course, all the amazing volunteers that helped put that on. But I also wanted to give thanks to the Butte Silver Bowl crews, the, the work that goes into it to get the, the Folk Festival up and running. And then, if you go uptown Butte on Monday, it doesn't look like there was ever a festival in town. It's amazing what the Butte Silver Bowl crews do, Sean, in the Parks Department, along with Ed Hurd there, and, and Mark Neary, and the Public Works Crews, the Police Department, Fire Department, all the people that just worked so hard to, to make an amazing festival. And, and it was fantastic, the music, the dance, the, the culture is just amazing event. I also want to mention that exciting times for two of our baseball teams, our, our junior and senior Little League teams, both made the Western Regionals. I think it's the first time ever that Butte has been represented by a couple teams. We have, two of our directors' son is on the junior team, and so we want to wish them good luck as, as they go forward and represent Butte proudly. And so, I know that, that my Little League is, is, has a Venmo account if people want to donate to help send those kids to, to the Western Regionals, but it's, it's an exciting time for that. Cyrus Western, the new EPA Region Eight Administrator, was in town. He came last night to the Montana Mining Association Dinner and spoke briefly there. Today, he visited sites in Butte, including the Montana Resources, and then stopped by for about a 20-minute visit with, with us here in the, in the courthouse with me. He's visiting the local sites to get, you know, his eyes on what the sites are. So, he's, he's not doing public meetings yet. He, he's visiting all the Superfund sites across the state. He started in Billings, came to Butte. He was heading to Missoula this afternoon, and then from Missoula, he's going to Libby. So, he kinda was getting his eyes on, on the sites and understanding what the, the sites are, working with the, the EPA Montana staff, and, and getting a clear understanding of what that is. So, it was a pleasure to have him in. I introduced him to Bob Green, because that was one of the asks he had of me, because he just adores Coach Green and just all of his, his one-liners that he has. But, so, he got a picture-taking opportunity with Coach Green, and so that was pretty special. And so, that limited my time a little bit with, with the administrator, because he was pretty enamored with, with Coach Green, so it was fantastic. So, other things that are going on Butte, of course, you know, summer's here, events are still happening, the, the fair's gonna be happening at the end of the month. And so, we encourage people to be looking for all the events that are going on. We also have lunch in the park on Wednesdays. I know today was down a little bit. We did have a little drizzly weather, but we encourage people to go there. It's, it's a great activity up at Emma Park, where we're encouraging people to go there and have lunch and, and put on by the Butte Parks and Trails Foundation. So, with that, I'm gonna close out the chief executive's report, and we're gonna move on to Section 1, Bid Openings, Public Hearings, and/or Presentations. We have one presentation tonight. Item number one, communication number 2025-346, Carolina Blue, Superfund Emergency Management Division Representing, Representative Requesting Council of Commissioners Authorization to Schedule, Schedule a Presentation on July 16 to Provide an Update in Multiple Operable Units in the Silver Bow Creek Butte Superfund, Butte Area One Superfund Site. And I know Carolina is not here, but I would like to invite up Molly Robey, Emma Rot, and Jason Rappi, Rappi, right? As I said, that were correct. I blistered it first, up to do the presentation tonight.
We have some printouts of the slides, as well as some business cards.
Printout. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for having us on your agenda this evening. We're eager to speak with you and provide you with the general update of many of the operable units that we support. So, my name is Molly Robey. This is Emma Rot, and Jason Rappi, and we'll describe how we support the overall Superfund site that encompasses Silver Bow Creek and Butte Area. So, we're gonna start out with kind of an overall map, and you'll see this in your slides. So, Slide 2, just describing how, how the site is broken up. We're also gonna talk a little bit about kind of general Superfund overview. Some of you may or may not be familiar with some of the lingo that we talk about when we talk about Superfund, some of the process words that we use, and then also just how sites are broken up for us to do the work that we do. So, this specific map shows the operable units, which is how we described individual parts of a Superfund site. And those operable units usually describe like a media, or a type of contamination, or maybe even a specific, like, for instance, we're looking at metals when we talk about the Butte site. But maybe some parts of the site have different contaminants of concern that we would be addressing on one part of the site that maybe aren't a concern on others. So, we use those operable unit designations or titles to just be able to break up the site into more manageable pieces as we move through the Superfund process. So, you'll see seven different operable units or areas on this map, and one or the three of us support all of those different operable units. And so, you'll see RPM, which is Remedial Project Manager. So, that is the title under CIRCLA, so under the statute that we work under for Superfund. That is the, our job description is laid out in CIRCLA, in the Comprehensive Environmental Liability and Response Act. There it is. So, CIRCLA, Superfund, we use those words interchangeable, but they're generally the same thing. So, you can see the RPM, Remedial Project Manager, that supports each of those listed underneath each of these areas. We're gonna talk specifically about the three that affect mainly the Butte community the most. So, Operable Unit 3, which is Butte Mine Flooding, so basically the groundwater represented by the big green blob on your map. Butte Priority Soils, which is uptown Butte, Waukerville residential, residential properties in that area, but basically Butte itself. And then Operable Unit 13, which is Westside Soils.
And one thing just to note of that map, too. So, Montana Pole is another Superfund site that you may have all heard of, but it's not technically part of the Silver Bow Creek Butte Area site, so we won't be speaking about that today, but that is just the reason why it's not shown on, on that map. It's, that project is run by Montana Department of Environmental Quality. So, when Molly, as Molly was just saying, my name is Emma Rot, and I support both the Westside Soils Operable Unit and the Butte Priority Soils Operable Unit. And for each of the operable units that we're gonna focus on today, we're gonna just look at the current status, so what is, what we're generally working on right now. And then, we're gonna wrap up at the end with the description of some of the community outreach activities that we have been working on and that we're planning to work on. But we are, for each of these, we kinda wanted to bring it back to highlighting the Superfund process and use this as a tool to help us and hopefully help everyone else who's listening to this understand where the different projects are within this process. So, for each of the operable units, they go through the remedial process that's shown up here on the screen, and they start with the green area called Assessment. And that's really before a Superfund site even begins, where, you know, EPA would be called in, and they would take a look at a source of contamination and see if that source is, you know, bad enough that it should be elevated to be listed on the National Priorities List, and EPA should start the actual Superfund process. Butte obviously was listed on the National Priorities List quite a long time ago, so that assessment work has been completed, and we've moved into the different phases of the remedial, remedial process for the remaining operable units, which moves directly into characterization. So, where EPA or other parties go out there and really try and cast a wide net to understand what contamination may there be, what types of contaminants are we talking about, and are humans or animals or other people being at risk because they're interacting with those contaminants. Then you kinda move, once you have a handle of that, we have an ability to then select a remedy or a cleanup option, where we put out a plan to the public and say, this is what we know of the contamination, this is how we think to best address it. And then, once we receive public feedback out of a proposed plan, we issue a Record of Decision that really details the selection of that remedy and what our plan is. And then, we're able to actually enter into the cleanup phase of the project where we implement that remedy. And for Butte, we'll talk about it, there's a lot of different remedies that have been ongoing, implemented, lots still planned to be implemented, and a lot of remedy components that are already in this post-construction phase. So, they've been completed. We're just maintaining them and, and making sure that as this process moves on, that those remedy decisions that were made back in time, some a long time ago, some not so long ago, are still protective of the community. So, I'm gonna be talking about first, Westside Soils Operable Unit. And Westside Soils Operable Unit is generally located to the west of Tech's campus and up of, up north of Waukerville towards Molten Reservoir. It's about 6,000 acres, so it's pretty massive. And for those of you who have been out there, it's, it's generally open range land, a lot of private property out there. There are some residences that live over, or residential properties over there, and, and a lot of areas that people clearly recreate on, too. There's the trails west of Montana Tech that obviously people recreate on, but also some areas that people are recreating on, because it's open space. So, it, the, at Westside Soils, EPA has conducted a remedial investigation. So, in that, that characterization phase of the project, where we took a look at the entire area to identify what contamination may be present, and that, in the area, like most of Butte, was identified that there's mine wastes, impacted soils, that groundwater has been impacted by the mining activity in that area, and surface water therefore has also been impacted as well. And the primary contaminants that we're seeing over there are lead, arsenic, and manganese. And manganese is a little bit not often talked about in Butte, but in Westside Soils, because it is a little bit of a different geological area compared to the rest of uptown Butte, hence why the mining over there was a lot different than it was in, in uptown Butte. That one is, is kind of particular to Westside Soils. So, as I said, EPA worked through the remedial investigation and published that in October of 2024, so last fall. And that investigation took a look at all the different media, all the different types of contamination that may be present, and, and then ran a human health risk assessment and an ecological risk assessment. So, took all of that data and put it in and tried to get a better understanding of what type of unacceptable risk may be present. So, are there residences that are being exposed to higher levels of metals in their yards? Or if you're a biker, biking on the trails west of Tech, are you being exposed to contaminants at an unacceptable level? So, that's what those processes worked through. And now, we're moving into the feasibility study, which is part of that, still that characterization phase, where we're looking at, now that we have a handle on where that contamination is and who may be impacted by it, we're looking at how do we fix that? How do we remedy it? Where we'll come up with quite a few different alternatives that, when they combine together, would fix that or remedy those, those issues that do exist. That, that document is in draft form right now, and we're targeting a completion date by the end of 2025. And once that's finalized, then we'll issue this proposed plan, which will be a relatively shortened document, summarizing all of the work that we did as part of the remedial investigation and feasibility study, and propose what remedy we suggest would be the most effective to reduce those risks that may be present. And then, from there, move on to issuing a Record of Decision, choosing what remedy we think will be best out there, and then getting to the actual cleanup work. One thing to know about, also, also about the Westside Soils Operable Unit is that we are still working on a potentially responsible party search. So, we'll talk about Butte Priority Soils and Butte Mine Flooding, where we have those searches completed. We have parties who are completing that work under EPA oversight. But at Westside Soils, we're still working through that process, and it's, and it's, we're, we're hoping to wrap that up as we get towards these remedy decisions as well. So, back to our process here. So, Westside Soils is in the red charact, or orange, depending on, I guess, your glasses, where, is in the characterization phase, but we're gonna move on to start talking about Butte Priority Soils Operable Unit, where we are in the cleanup phase and post-construction phase. And I am, there we go, gonna kinda focus on the, the areas of this operable unit that I oversee, and then Molly's gonna share more about the, the areas of this operable unit that she oversees. So, at Butte Priority Soils Operable Unit, the, the, the uptown Butte and down towards the corridor where Blacktail Creek and Silver Bow Creek combine, EPA and other parties have done numerous, numerous years of investigations to recognize that there's cleanup needed of mine waste, tailings, soils, residential soils, surface water, groundwater. And, and through all of those investigations, we've issued numerous Record of Decisions. So, making So making different remedy choices that, once all of the remedies are combined, all of the risks should be reduced to any human health or any ecological receptors that may be, or people or animals or anyone who may be interacting with any of the materials around them. All of that remedy work in Butte Priority Soils operable unit is being conducted by responsible parties. And those are being done under a unilateral order of consent or a UAO and a consent decree. So part of the consent decree work, oh yeah, there we go. Oh no. Really went too far. Sorry about that. Okay, there we go. So part of, part of the consent decree work that some of you may have heard of are the corridor projects and/or you've maybe seen some communications from EPA that we've got ongoing remedials design and remedial action. So out of the consent decree, there were projects issued and/or agreed upon to happen in that corridor area, one of which, which is ongoing right now at Grove Gulch. So Grove Gulch enters into Blacktail Creek right along Lexington Avenue on the other side of where the Lexington Wetlands are. And that project started last year and is, is intended to really support when a storm event hits, that any contaminated soils that may be running down Grove Keet Creek are being captured before they enter into Blacktail Creek. That, that construction work is, is ongoing and is planned to be wrapped up this year. And while that construction work has been ongoing, Atlantic Richfield and, and their contractors have been working on progression of the other projects within that corridor area where really the main point of all of those is to try and capture storm water and drop out some of those contaminated sediments before they enter into Blacktail and Silver Bow Creek. The next one of those designs that we're anticipating to see in July, late July, early August is the Diggings East design. So if you guys have been in the Diggings East area, it's going to be a very similar plan that's intended to be there of a storm water basin or a basin to capture those sediments. And Grove Gulch will not be available for public use when it's, when it's completed, but a lot of these other project areas will and they'll be turned into a park that the public will be able to use eventually. And the, so, so that, all of the design work associated with those consent decree projects are progressing through our design process and we'll eventually, we'll be able to implement those. But there's also other work going on as well that has been ongoing for many years now. So Butte Treatment Lagoons, which is located pretty close to the wastewater treatment plant here in Butte, that's consistently treating groundwater out of that corridor area every single day where groundwater is captured before it enters into any of the creeks and piped down to the treatment lagoons where it's treated and then redischarged into Silver Bow Creek. There's lots of surface water and groundwater monitoring to make sure that those remedies that are in place, like that groundwater capture are, are effective and that they are actually capturing that groundwater before it enters into the creek. That's ongoing at many different points throughout the year. And then another project that you guys may have heard of as well is a repository siting process. So repository siting process started after the signing of the 2020 consent decree for Butte Priority Soils operable unit. And the main point of that really is that out of these corridor projects, there's about 1.1 million cubic yards of material that needs to be moved to a repository. And out of that, the existing Butte Mine Waste Repository as it was designed currently was not going to be able to hold the capacity. So a repository siting process was enacted where a committee came together, I think some of you are on that committee, supported evaluating potential locations for that repository to go, or for the repository to be located at. Last year, Atlantic Richfield and Butte Silver Bow and the committee issued a, an initial screening report, so looked at a lot of those different locations, narrowed it down to just a few. And they have been working since then on issuing a final recommendations report that we're anticipating in the next month or so that will say, here's our recommendation for where we'd like to cite this repository, of which then EPA will review and concur depending on what the recommendation is. And that'll really support a lot of these additional projects happening in the corridor, getting them to the finish line. Because if there's nowhere to put that material, it was really going to cause a delay in that construction timeline. So, so yeah, and I'm going to pivot to Molly now.
Okay, so as Emma spoke to you, there's lots of ongoing work as a part of the Butte Priority Soils operable unit. And there are two enforcement mechanisms that we utilize in order to do this EPA oversight of the super fund work. So we have the consent decree, which I think generally is more of a buzzword that we hear in this community. People are more familiar with the consent decree and the ongoing work with, associated with that. But all of the residential cleanup, which is also very critical to this community, takes place under the unilateral administrative order. And that was a 2011 document and was amended then later in 2020 after the consent decree was finalized as well. So we have two different enforcement mechanisms that we work under in order to get all of this work done just in Butte Priority Soils operable unit alone. So there's a lot of coordination with a lot of different parties that, you know, is constant just to be able to move, move the ball forward in that kind of super fun process that we keep coming back to. So some of the projects that I oversee within the operable unit are the uncontrolled surface flow areas that were identified in the consent decree. And those are the 14 identified drainage areas that are currently uncontrolled, meaning they're draining from areas where there could be potential mine contamination contributing to those drainages which eventually end up in Silver Bow Creek. And so we're doing a more of a scaled back approach as identified in the consent decree to address those smaller drainages where we're employing what we're calling best management practices, which are basically sedimentation basins, places where water can allow sediment to drop out and we don't see that metal loading into the river. And then I also oversee the unreclaimed and insufficiently reclaimed source areas. And those are the areas identified within Butte Priority Soils, the majority of which are on the hill, that were identified with some mining contamination where we are actively reclaiming areas. So that requires doing further characterization to see exactly where the contamination might be. And then we apply a cap on areas that we've identified need to be addressed. And that's really to ensure that we are mitigating any stormwater runoff through those areas where we still might have elevated concentrations of metals or levels of metals. We have several reclaimed sites that are operated under the Butte Reclamation Evaluation System Program. And Butte Silver Bow Department oversees that work to ensure that those reclaimed areas, those source areas that have already had a cap, that we're maintaining the vegetation, ensuring weed control, making sure we don't have erosion issues. So those are being constantly evaluated every single year. And then I also oversee the Residential Metals Abatement Program, which supports not only the residential cleanup, but also those parks, playgrounds, schools, and daycares, both residential soils, so somebody's yard, as well as interior dust. And we work closely with the county health department with a lot of the outreach that we're, we're trying to ramp up and we'll speak more to that. And so there's, there's a lot going on just within the RMAP or Residential Metals Abatement Program as well. One update I wanted to provide to you all this evening is related to the 2024 proposed plan that was issued in October last year. And that was the dramatic lowering or proposed lowering of the lead cleanup number. That public comment period extended into February. And we are at a point in the process where we review all of that information that was provided. So all of that comment that was pub, provided as a part of that public process. And we evaluate what was given to us and figure out what things we can incorporate, how we can make adjustments to that proposed plan. So we are in a phase where we're reviewing those comments and then we work to provide feedback and that is a part of the public process. And that all of that would be captured in a new record of decision amendment. So that's that decision document milestone in the characterization phase of that chart that we keep referring to. And so at this time, we are in a coordination with Headquarters Office of Land and Emergency Management, which is a Headquarters, basically office within the Washington DC office that we, we receive our oversight from when we do any super fund site, whether it's here in Butte or any super fund site across the country. So they are the overseeing office of that. So we are coordinating with them because a lot of the comments that we received have national implications for what our response is or how, how we can incorporate that into, into the, the remedy for our site might dictate how it's done at another site. So there's a lot of course, close coordination that's required in order for us to move that milestone for the community. At this time, we have heard that Headquarters is reviewing that 2024 January lead guidance. We don't have a clear understanding of what that means at this time, but that's part of this coordination piece that we're in right now. So we wanted to be transparent with you, just to make sure that you're aware, we're, we're working as fast as we can, but we are definitely waiting for some additional guidance. We've been told that could come imminently in the next month or so, but we don't have any firm deadlines on when that guidance will come. But in the meantime, I wanted to really assure the council and the community of Butte that we are, we have heard many hundreds of comments from the community about the, the timeline that was proposed in the proposed plan and have been actively working with the RMAP program team. So that includes Butte Silver Bow, that includes Atlantic Richfield to determine ways that we can move the ball faster. So this year, I'm pleased to say that we have sampled an immense amount of properties already and we're only halfway through our field season. We're set to complete 470 residential yards sampled this season by August 1st with potentially six weeks or more into the fall, which is a huge number. And so we'll continue to, continue to sample as many yards as we can each season, working to find efficiencies to make that program, the transition from sampling into yard remediation even faster. And so we are, we're working, that's our number one priority within the RMAP program team right now is how we can find those efficiencies moving forward. So as Emma discussed, we're in this cleanup phase. So remedial design, remedial action, that's a fancy word for saying, oop, fancy, thank you, for saying, you know, we're design, we're producing designs for how, like engineering designs for how we're going to do the cleanup. Remedial action is the yellow iron in the ground actually doing the construction work. And then one thing I wanted to highlight on this particular slide is the five-year review process, which is the smaller gray arrow that starts with remedial action. So as soon as an excavator bucket goes into the ground as remedial action or construction, we start the clock for a five-year review. So every five years at a super fund site, we take a look at what's been done, what's the effectiveness of the remedy, is it being protective? Is there new science that can inform what we're doing? How can we be, you know, more effective in the work that we're doing? So it's a, it's a comprehensive look at the super fund site. And so I just wanted to provide that assurance. And I think it's important to highlight that, you know, within five years at a minimum, we're always going back and reviewing our work. And so that is an important milestone for us this year. We are just starting to kick off that process. It starts about a year in advance of when it's statutorily required to be completed. And so next summer, 2026, is when that will be required to be approved and put in the record as the milestone for the five-year review. And so we'll be starting that public process and that doesn't include interviews with the public. So that'll be a process that will fill you in on and ensure that if you'd like to participate in those interviews, that you have the opportunity to do so. And one thing while I'm thinking about it, we have our contact on the business card. So just something else to add. I'll pass it to Jason.
Good evening, everybody. Again, my name's Jason Rappi. I'm the project manager for the Butte Mine Flooding Operable Unit. The, again, for those that don't know, Mine Flooding Operable Unit, Berkeley Pit. The Mine Flooding Operable Unit's currently in remedial action. While there hasn't been a lot of visual work ongoing recently, there's been a lot going on in the background. So since we started discharging from the Berkeley Pit, we've been working on what we've been called, what we've called the pilot project. And the pilot project has a number of objectives. Some of them you're probably all well aware of. It's maintaining Berkeley Pit water level. It's demonstrating a response of the water level compliance wells. It's demonstrating that we can achieve discharge requirements to Silver Bow Creek. There's also a couple ones that aren't so obvious. One of those being demonstrating that we can use Berkeley Pit water in the active mine process up at Montana Resources. Or in addition to that, you know, reducing the amount of stored water up at Yankee Doodle Tailings Empowerment. Last year, we completed the final objective of the pilot project that was reducing the water at the Tailings Empowerment. And since then, we've been operating in what we've been calling the steady state phase. And steady state essentially for us just means this is what conditions are going to look like into the future. Sometime this summer, we're expecting to call that steady state phase complete. We'll say that the pilot project has achieved its objectives. And then we're going to start moving into the next phase. The next phase is pulling together a report called the Remedial Action Adequacy Review. And the purpose of this is to take all of those objectives from the pilot project and demonstrate that, hey, we've met the CD requirements that were, you know, pulled together way back in the day. This is kind of the, the demonstrating document or the, the administrative record for that In addition, I did want to highlight that there continues to be interest in critical minerals at the Berkeley Pit. I'm sure you're all aware, in the past, Montana Resources has worked with a number of universities and Department of Defense to kind of demonstrate the efficacy of removing critical minerals from Berkeley Pit water. EPA is also extremely interested in this. So this year EPA is collecting some, some water as well. We're going to be, well, not this project team, but the specific office at EPA, research office at EPA is going to be working on a number of different technologies to demonstrate its potential usefulness at offsetting costs at super fund sites. So not only potentially the one here in Butte, but all across the country. In the future, we do expect to present these results. Unsure when that's going to be quite yet, but we're hoping sometime next year. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Molly.
Okay. Okay, so the last thing that we wanted to get into is the community engagement and community outreach that we've really been trying to hit hard this year. So the three of us came onto the site also with our community involvement coordinator. Her name is Mackenzie Meter. She's on vacation today, so she wasn't able to come tonight. But you'll probably see her name and her presence at any public, public meetings and office hours and things like that that we have. But one of the things that we all noticed in coming onto the project last year, when we all joined the project, was that when we were having public meetings, when we were having open house events, a lot of times they happen in the evening and we were missing a target population, which is young families with young children, which is the whole reason that basically we're doing the Residential Metals Abatement Program. So the residential cleanup is to protect human health specifically for young children and pregnant for young children and pregnant and nursing mothers. So we noticed that that was something we were missing. We weren't getting that target population, but we definitely wanted to make sure that they were getting the information that they needed in order to keep their families safe. So we started really kind of digging into how EPA can support all of the incredible work that the Butte Silver Bow Environmental Health Nurse, Kayla Harvey, does. She's fabulous. And so if anyone is having their blood lead tested, she would be the person that you're interacting with. But really trying to work with her to identify how we can find those places in the community where we're missing, getting that communication outward. So I'm going to talk to the lower bullets here. But certainly, we're continuing our monthly emails and our newsletters. But, and we also reorganized our website, which historically has been clunky and hard to find things. So we've tried to make it a little more user-friendly to the extent that we can modify a, you know, website that's dictated by the federal government as far as how it looks and making sure it's consistent for every Superfund site. So we've done the best that we can to try to make it more user-friendly. But then we've tried to work with Kayla and other Butte Silver Bow team members to determine how we can find those windows of opportunity in the community. So we've worked with the school district to get even packets of information into the kind of pre-kindergarten backpacks that went home to families in the community. You know, ahead of, everybody headed out for summer vacation, they had those resources about how to keep themselves safe from lead and arsenic contamination that may or may not be in their yard. But just simple practices like hand washing is really the best thing that you can do. That's the way that especially children are mostly exposed, is just they have it in their hands, they put it in their mouth, or they wipe their nose with it, or whatever. And so just, you know, simple things that young, young families, just those tools that they can deploy at home. And then working with Head Start and also the school district to figure out how we can participate in kind of those back-to-school events and maybe be able to capitalize on people already being at a location. And we're just, we just happen to be there to be able to provide additional resources at those events. So it's not mom having to drag their kids back to another event, they're already going to be there for back-to-school night or whatever. So we're trying to find more opportunities to do things like that. So we are piggybacking and supporting Kayla and the Health Department with the Health Fair that's taking place next Monday. Supposed to be a family-friendly event, and the posters look great, and there's a lot of community partners supporting that. So we're going to be supporting that event. Certainly we'll be available and participating in DEQ or the Department of Environmental Qualities Open House, which is taking place in August. And then, as I spoke to earlier, we'll be looking at those community interviews in the near term. And then certainly we'll be available at some of these other events that we're trying to, again, find our way into. One of the other things that we've started to evaluate are ways that we, as a team, can support the medical community. I think when there's even health provider turnover, there may, and someone moves into Butte, number one, they might be, they might not be familiar with Butte itself, but also the Superfund site, which is something that we want to carry over, and that it's very important in patient evaluation, patient care, to know the environmental health hazards that somebody might or may not be exposed to. So we're currently working to develop strategies with the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, ATSDR, which is a federal subsidiary department of the Department of Health, and how they can also provide support with that provider outreach. Certainly, I'm an engineer, I'm not a medical provider, but I'm trying to find ways that I can bring people together. We've been working closely with Dr. Cornell, and we'll continue to do so. As someone that's already engaged in the Medical Monitoring Working Group, a part of the Butte Priority Soils Operable Unit here in Butte. But overall, just trying to bring people together, bring resources together in order for us to really increase that outreach, not only in schools and just getting the word out to young families, but then really supporting our medical community here in Butte. So, so those are the things that we're actively working on right now. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Molly. So are there any questions of commissioners that you'd like to be asked? Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. First, I just want to thank you guys for coming tonight. I also appreciate, and I think this is probably the fourth time I've had time to come and see you guys' presentation in the last year, a couple times up at CTEC, up at the CTEC, up at the Archives, and then again tonight. So I really appreciate it. It's, it's nice to know what's going on. You know, we're the ones that are making the decisions up here, and a lot of times we're kind of in the dark. But I sure appreciate you guys' progress. Everybody's complaining it's moving slow, it's because they don't know what's going on. And I think you guys are doing a great job. You're doing a good job moving forward. And I got a couple questions, though. I guess I'll start with the Westside soils. Back when the consent decree was signed, there wasn't a whole lot known about the Westside soils, right? And, and I'm not sure if it was the meetings up at, the gatherings at CTEC or the CTEC meeting, but there was some chatter about wells. And I know up at, on the Upper West Side, in the molten area, you know, MR pays biannual for anybody that wants their well tested. And so there's lots of logs of what's going on with the wells there. But I guess in the Lower West Side around CTEC, there wasn't a whole lot of knowledge what was going on. Can you give us an update on that?
Commissioner Callahan, I guess, and Emma.
Okay, so Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Callahan. Yeah, I, I'll admit, I'm relatively new to the project, so I'll give you the best information I can, but I may have to take some questions back and, and respond to you on those. But it's, it's my understanding that as part of the remedial investigation, EPA did sample a lot of residential wells in that Lower West Side area, and also utilized some of the data that Montana Resources does collect from other residential wells located up closer to the Yankee Doodle Tailings Empowerment. EPA did not install any other monitoring wells, but really focused the effort on residential wells that were already existing to make sure that if people are actively drinking that water, that they're aware of the water quality that exists in those wells. So I think the, the number of, I think there's about, I think they sampled about forty, EPA sampled about forty residential wells in that area and provided those results. And then it's my understanding as well that we sent out letters in May, again, to all of the residences, residential properties within the Westside Operable Unit, to notify them that there was a sampling event that occurred. But if they're interested in having their wells sampled, then we're going to be trying to work with Montana Bureau of Mines and Geology to have that accessible for some people that denied access, or maybe didn't read the communication, or weren't aware of it. So that, that's, we've taken a look at just primarily residential wells at this point.
Follow up, Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you. The second one would be priority soils. I think when we signed the consent decree, there was like a number around 150 unreclaimed or underreclaimed. How's our progress on them? And where are we now that the numbers have dropped considerably?
Commissioner Callahan, I guess this one would go to Molly.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Chairman, I, so for the unreclaimed and insufficiently reclaimed, many of those sites, or most of those sites, were investigated, or the additional sampling was completed in 2022. And so at this point, we're working through the Remedial Action Work Plan phase. So basically incorporating the data that we saw and determining where we need to do that capping work, or if there's soils that need to be removed. And all of that is put together in like a big design package, and then put together in a work plan for construction. So many of those have started taking place, the actual construction of those. One that you may or may not have seen is the Bell of Butte in Waukerville. That's one of the sites that just wrapped up. I think they were waiting on fencing the last time I was up there. So, and it looks really good. And then we're, you know, so we're progressing. I don't have the count on top of my head, but I can certainly follow up with you on where we're at specific to those numbers. But the numbers identified in the consent decree were 26 insufficiently reclaimed. So those were sites that had been reclaimed in the 90s prior to the Butte Hill revegetation specification, which provided this is the type of replacement soil that should be used when capping these areas, so that we're not adding additional contamination. We, we know exactly the limits that are being applied in this area, and this is going to support vegetation and, and all of those constituents. And then, so those were the ones that were identified as insufficiently reclaimed. And then I think it's 39 unreclaimed areas, and those were areas where no work had been identified that had been completed at that time. And so now we're looking to see where contamination still exists and how we can reclaim those areas. So those were the, but I can certainly follow up with you with the exact status if you'd like, sir.
Thank you, Molly. Follow up, Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you. I just, I guess I should have asked this one before. You were talking about responsible parties for the Westside soil. Is there any possibility that Butte Silver Bow is going to be one of them?
Commissioner Callahan, Emma, I guess this is.
Yeah, Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Callahan. It's too early to say. They're, yeah, they're working on, we have an enforcement group within our region that works on it. And because I'm so new to the Westside Soils Operable Unit, I haven't had a chance to meet with them yet to understand where exactly we are in that process. And I think because we haven't come to any conclusions, it would also not be appropriate for me to talk, speak to that at this time. So as soon as, as soon as we have that information, obviously, we'll be working with anybody that is identified and, and working towards coming to any sort of future agreements to get work done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner O'Leary?
Thank you, Chief Executive. I guess we were talking about the outreach, and I, I had a thought, which is, you know, a lot of the new residents of our town, one of their first interfaces is with property managers and, and brokerages, real estate brokerages. I have not seen literature in the brokerages over the years about the programs that you do, but it might be a worthwhile thing to reach out to the brokerages and property managers to have them passing out literature. But I did have a question. You mentioned that the Grove-Golch area would not, that the surface area wouldn't be available for use by residents at, at the end. Wondering why that is, and then what is the final use of that, of that surface area planned for?
Commissioner O'Leary and Emma.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner O'Leary. Yeah, so Grove-Golch, it's a pretty small area really where that sedimentation bays is located. So logistically, it was not an area that could be really opened up for the public. And at this point, so that that area is going to be maintained by Butte Silver Bow in the future, once it is completed, and we're, we're sure that it's working as, as intended. But a lot of the other project areas within that corridor, that end land use vision is to have those open to the public, where there'll be walkways and benches and, you know, other facilities and parking areas that, that people could utilize.
Thank you, Emma. Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I echo Commissioner Callahan. I appreciate you people being here and what you're doing. The one question I did have is, you used the word headquarters a couple different times about the lead levels. Who's headquarters?
Commissioner Fisher, Molly.
Chief Executive, Mr. Fisher. So the Headquarters has several different groups or branches or divisions, whatever you want to call them, underneath that support the different programs that overall EPA oversees. So Clean Air Act, Clean Water Act, all of those have different components that fit under kind of the general headquarters umbrella. So the Office of Land and Emergency Management is the entity that tells us Superfund folk what to do. So we have CIRCLA, which is the statute that we are responsible for carrying out on our site. But Headquarters produced, for instance, in this case, to your question, the 2024-led guidance for residential implementation. And so they are taking a look at that guidance document and how it will be deployed not only here, but across the country. So Headquarters is, when we speak to Headquarters, we are talking about the Office of Land and Emergency Management.
Thank you. Follow up, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Thank you. That wasn't quite the answer I'm looking for, but it answers. Headquarters is a kind of a, a word that you, people use when they want to, you know, avoid putting the pin on anyone. But I guess my question has been a big concern of many citizens in Butte is the 12 part, 1,200 parts per million in Butte, and then other areas close by are 400 parts per million. And we are still, as far as I know, at lead levels way above anywhere in the country. And I don't understand why Headquarters, whoever they might be, can't make a decision on the lead level in Butte Silver Bow. I mean, it just makes no sense to me that someone can't come up and say, the community of Butte Silver Bow deserves better than that. And I thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Any other, Commissioner O'Neil?
Thank you, Chief Executive. Thank you guys for being here and taking your time to be with us. Appreciate that. The repository siding, you mentioned that possibly a month to, like, when you say a month, that will, that'll come back to this body to be able to decide to where will actually, where the spot's going to be? Is that a fair question?
Commissioner O'Neil, Emma, I guess that question's you.
Yeah. Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner O'Neil. So the, the repository siding process was started at the signing of the consent decree. And the way that it lined out is that EPA worked with Butte Silver Bow to assign a committee, and that committee was going to be representative of the public to take in that public opinion and, and public knowledge of, of where that repository should be cited. So as part of that process, several meetings have, have happened with the members that were appointed to that committee, and they've worked through to issue this final recommendations report. And that final recommendation will come through Atlantic Richfield and Butte Silver Bow ultimately, of the location that they're intending to or wanting to use based off of the recommendations from that committee. And then EPA ultimately will be the entity that will say, we agree or we disagree, and here are the reasons why.
Follow up, Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you. So I'm just curious on the, on the, on the timeframe of that. It's been, because I'm on the committee.
Yeah.
So at this point, I guess I either missed the emails or missed the, I'm just curious when, like, when, because the only way we make it happen to move, we, we need a spot. And a spot needs to be picked. And I just hope that we can push that sooner than later. I know we keep kicking the can down the road because we don't want to put it anywhere, but I hope that, I just, I know you guys are pushing as hard as you can, and definitely appreciate all the hard work you do, but I hope that's a, I just feel like, we're, we're always next month, next year, and I don't, I truthfully, I guess I should know where we're at, because I'm on the committee, but I have no idea, and it scares me. And I pray to God we get, find a spot. And I hope your next month, you said, I'm not quoting you on that either, just so you know, but it'd be really cool if they could figure it out by next month.
Commissioner O'Neil, I'd also kind of like to speak to that. So on the repository site, I mean, we did put members of the public on it, but now we're past, you know, where sites have been identified, and then the technical aspect of it, it's, it's beyond what the siding committee should be responsible for. So now we're really kind of on to where AR, Butte Silver Bow, and then ultimately EPA is going to land saying this is where we should be going. And so that's kind of, the repository siding has, has done their job, because there's been multiple sites that have done that. So that's where our position is in Butte Silver Bow. That we're, we're to the end where we're going to go. AR is going to make a recommendation where they think they can take the, the soils, and then, then ultimately EPA will be the regulatory body that says, this is where we're going to land. So is there any other questions, Commissioner, Commissioner Walker?
Thanks, Chief Executive. My question is more, I did go to your website, and you have about 1,300 projects nationwide. So where does our project kind of rank in that? Because I see, I also read that Trump won- that? Because I see, I also read that Trump wants to cut 65% of the budget for the EPA. Are we in the top 35% or are we in the bottom 65?
Commissioner Walker, I don't know who wants to answer that question.
I'm up here.
Ms. Rock?
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Walker. Uh, so if you type in EPA.gov backslash Butte, you'll head straight to Butte specific, the Silver Bow Creek, Butte area website. I think it used to be longer, but as part of some of the upgrades to the website, um, it's there and that's a good reminder of us to put that on our presentation in the future. So you guys have that readily available. Um, but happy to share that afterwards. Uh, and in terms of funding, so in Butte Priority Soils Operable Unit, that work, the work is being carried out by the responsible parties. So regardless of EPA's funding every fiscal year, that work will continue on. And the work that we are doing is also funded through that, the settlements that we've reached with those responsible parties. So, um, so work will continue on regardless of where that budget falls for the overall agency.
Thank you, Ms. Rock. Any other questions, Commissioners?
I, I just wanted to, um, just talk a little bit in meeting with, uh, Region 8 Administrator today and, and meeting with him down in Denver. We emphasized the urgency of, of Butte. Um, and it's important for progress to be happening and, and where we're going. And, and our, our RPMs here are doing a great job of, of working hard, but it's, it's getting that understanding of where we're going to land on the lead, um, lead standard. And then also, you know, so that we're not piecemealing, um, yards where it may exceed in one spot and not another, but then we're revisiting it a year later and having those things done. So I think those are the things that we're talking about there. And then the urgency of getting a, a repository cited. Because ultimately what Butte wants is work and see progress moving. And so, um, I, I applaud you for being here. Thank you for the report. It, it, uh, it was very informative, I think, for everybody here. Um, they work hand in hand with our, um, our superfund department, um, but we don't call it that anymore. We, it's, uh, um, what's that? Um, the, the Department of Reclamation Environmental Services, DRAE. So anyhow, any, but they work together. And so we're in constant communication and, and I, I put a, uh, op ed into the paper, you know, saying that that's important for us to do this. But thank you for presenting to us. Um, I also wanted to give them credit. They went down and they, um, did a little presentation at my wife's school at Emerson and they had the kids asking them really good, poignant questions, which was fantastic. So if you want to go, what's the buzz down at, uh, Emerson Elementary School? They get sent out there. You'll see a great interview by kids with Emma and Molly at that site. So, um, once again, if there's no more questions of Commissioners, I just want to thank you again for being here tonight.
Oh, one last question, I guess. Commissioner O'Neil?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Chief Executive. So will the lead levels, the, whatever the lead levels are at, is that going to affect the repository siding? I didn't think so, but I'm elected to ask any dumb questions I choose to, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, Commissioner O'Neil, but no, that will not on the repository. It will not. Okay. Thank you. Thank you once again. All right. Moving forward. Moving on to section two, tonight's consent agenda, A1 through 4 and 1 through 22. Are there any friendly amendments and/or segregations? Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I would like to segregate item number two, Communication Number 2025-370. Item number three, Communication Number 2025-371. Item number four, 2025-372. Item number five, Communication Number 2025-373. And item number eight, Communication Number 2025-376.
Are there any other? Commissioner Healy?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to segregate Communication, Communication Number 2025-374.
That's item number six, Communication Number 2025-374. Are there any other friendly amendments and/or segregations? Seeing none, Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Section A, Committee Reports, 1 through 4. Section B, Communications 1 through 22, with the exceptions of, uh, number two, Communication Number 2025-370. Number three, Communication Number 2025-371. Number four, Communication Number 2025-372. Number five, Communication Number 2025-373. Number six, 2025, Communication Number 2025-374. And number eight, Communication Number 2025-376.
We have a motion in second to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record.
Nine yay, zero nay.
Nine yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving to item number two, Communication Number 2025-370. Karen Hassler, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council Commissioners authorization to schedule a presentation on July 23rd, 2025 agenda to make a presentation on the fiscal year 2026 budget. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Um, I'd spoken with Director Hassler. Um, so I hope all of you will indulge me because it's not going to be, we're not going to talk lengthy in all of these communications. Um, but I would, just really quick on Communication Number 2025-370, if Director Hassler wouldn't mind, you had provided us with a handout today on our desks. Um, I'm hoping that maybe you could go over that just briefly so we can kind of understand what you're setting up up here. Thank you.
Commissioner Thatcher, Director Hassler, welcome.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher and Commissioner Thatcher, members of council. Um, on your desks this evening is, uh, preliminary numbers from the Department of Revenue based on, um, market value and taxable value for, um, properties within our county. Now, this does not include any of the centrally assessed. We won't receive those values until the first Monday in August. So these numbers are very preliminary. So one of the things that I really want to point out to everybody, um, the first box, um, which is on the top is the market value. So anybody that has received their reappraisal notices from the Department of Revenue, um, we've seen and heard that there have been people who have been, um, very surprised by the increases in their values of their property, specifically their land. Um, if you look at the market value from tax year 2024, it's at like $5,168,000. Um, this year's preliminary values are $7 billion. So that's an increase of almost $2 billion in market value. So that can be very concerning to our, um, residential property owners because when they see that significant increase, they think, "Oh, my word, my taxes are going to go up significantly." Um, and I think that's cause for concern for our community. Um, but what they really need to look at is the, the next number on their reappraisal, um, notice from the Department of Revenue, and that is the taxable value. So when the legislature passed, um, I think it's, pardon me, uh, two, two separate bills, House Bill 231 and Senate Bill 542 during this last legislative session, um, they reduced the taxed rates and tiers, um, at which the property taxes, um, or the, the properties are valued at. So the second box down below shows by, uh, taxing jurisdiction, the difference between the tax year 2024 and tax year 2025 taxable value. Our taxable value overall, even though our market rate or our market value has increased by nearly $2 billion, our taxable value has decreased by $327,000 based on the decrease in those tax rate tiers for our property. Um, there is, uh, two highlights that you'll see in there. Um, one is called, it's, uh, taxing jurisdiction 1U, which is basically, um, Butte in general, our residential core. Um, it had an increase of, oh, let me look at the, if I go up above. So almost $1.4 billion in market value, which equates to about $3.6 million in taxable value. Um, the other one is the Harrison Avenue URD district, which I think that you're seeing, um, a lot of, uh, commercial construction out there and some of which may, um, the DOR, the Department of Revenue, has picked up in their last valuation. The rest of the taxing jurisdictions, um, are showing decreases in their taxable value. So what that means for us moving forward in our budget, um, we are currently, um, again, this does not include centrally assessed and these are very preliminary numbers, as we do expect a lot of property owners to submit, um, the AB 26 form, I think they're called, um, in a protest of the valuation of their property because the increase is so great. I think that it's causing, you know, some panic among our, our residential, um, taxpayers. But the thing to notice is that we are at 99.5% of what the taxable value was last year. So when we develop these budgets, we really talked about, um, staying status quo. So we knew that tax of our market values were going to go up. We anticipated that taxable values were going to go down. What we really base the budget on is that it would be kind of status quo from last year. And we're seeing that with the 99.5%. So while it's a small, small decrease, I don't anticipate at this time that it's gonna, that we're going to see a big fluctuation in, um, the tax, taxes that we're going to be levying for, uh, the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Thank you, Director Hassler. Any questions of Commissioners? Commissioner O'Neil?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Uh, Director Hassler, thank you for that explanation. I just wondered if, uh, on the Butte section, uh, on the lower portion of this page, the 1U, is there any, an easy way to determine how much of that is because of, uh, additional building versus just the change in, uh, in, in the valuations of existing properties? Or, or is that, uh, at this point, is it too, too complicated to pull that apart?
Commissioner O'Neil, Director Hassler?
Uh, Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner O'Neil, thank you for that question. Um, when we do get certified values from the Department of Revenue, for each district, they will give us what the newly taxable value is. And so, um, for us to try and determine, we would have to, um, work with planning and try to figure out what different permits that they've received for new construction and what areas they are in. Um, today we had a discussion about, do we have a map that shows in particular where each of these districts are? And we, there's really just no way to segregate like this 1U district to say, you know, it is a boundary of this because it just, we just can't. It's easy to say, um, we know where the mosquito district is, or we know where Waukerville is, or we know where the different, um, URDs or the TED districts are. But it really encompasses, um, all of Butte except for the outlying areas like Waukerville, Rocker, Ramsey, Divide, Melrose, and, uh, what am I missing? Divide, Melrose, Ramsey, Rocker, Waukerville.
Crackerville.
Yeah.
Thank you, Director Hassler. Uh, Commissioner Callahan?
Thank you, Chief Executive. I guess my question is, so the changes in percentages, I mean, there's a wide range of changes from 90 to 148. Can you kind of explain why there's such a big gap? Some are way up, some are down?
Commissioner Callahan, Director Hassler?
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Callahan. Um, we really don't know that. That's based on the Department of Revenue's appraisals of all of the properties. So, um, I can tell you that, um, the one district that is down is the South Buttehead and that is the district that has, um, a high percentage of personal property that depreciates very quickly. And so, um, it's not a surprise to see a decrease there. Um, they, it's, I believe, the crypto or Atlas Power, that district. And so it's not, um, a surprise to see that their market value would decrease while everybody else's would, would increase.
Follow up, Commissioner Callahan?
I guess I'm confused. If there's that kind of growth out there, why is the property decreasing in value?
Commissioner Callahan, I, I think I can, as I said, so they, they depreciate their, their equipment. And so they depreciate a value and, and that's why there's a significant drop out there, especially when it comes to some data centers and things like that. So if they're not showing the change of their equipment or anything like that, then it depreciates out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Commissioners? Thank you, Director Hassler. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Thank you, Director Hassler. I appreciate that. So along with that, um, Director Hassler's, both of them, son will be playing, um, like Chief Executive Gallagher spoke about, um, out in Oregon next week. She has asked that we kind of push everything back one week. This should not affect our timeline of getting the final budget passed. Um, so with that, if you guys would all indulge me, I would like to make a motion to reschedule the presentation to August 6th and refer to Committee of the whole pending that presentation for Communication Number 2025-370.
We have a motion in second to move commu, to move the date to August 6th, um, on Communication Number 2025-370. Is there anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine yay, zero nay.
Nine yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to item number three, Communication Number 2025-371. Karen Hassler, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing to establish the use rate for Metro Sewer. The public hearing will be, be on August 6th, 2025 and continued until the Council Commissioners sets a date to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget and fix the rate. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Same thing. I would like to make a motion to reschedule, uh, the public hearing to August 13th, 2025 and concur in holding the Committee of the whole pending the public hearing.
We have a motion in second to res, to change the date to August 13th for the public hearing and to hold in the Committee of the whole. Is there anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine yay, zero nay.
Nine yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving to item number four, Communication Number 2025-372. Karen Hassler, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing on August 6th, 2025 to discuss a rate increase for the solid waste collection district fees to cover the cost of contracted services with McGree Corporation. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I'd like to make a motion to reschedule the public hearing to August 13th, 2025 and concur in holding Committee of the whole pending the public hearing.
We have a motion in second to, um, change the public hearing date to August 13th and to concur in holding the Committee of the whole pending the public hearing. Is there anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Eight yay, one nay.
He, I think that was a mistake. He's giving a thumbs up. Am I correct?
So nine yay, zero nay.
Nine yay, zero, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to item number five, Communication Number 2025-373. Karen Hassler, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing on August 6th, 2025 for the adoption of fiscal year 2026 budget and establish the use rates for the stormwater system, solid waste disposal and lighting, fire and fire hydrant district. The public hearing will continue until the Council Commissioners sets a date to adopt the fiscal year 2026 final budget and fix the rates and levies. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Since it's my last one, I would like to wish the Butte All-Stars very good luck next week. Um, I hope both teams are successful and safe travels to you and Eric, or Director Hassler. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to reschedule pub, the public hearing to August 13th and concur with Communication Number 2025-373 in holding the Committee of the whole pending the public hearing.
We have a motion in second to change the date of the public hearing to August 13th and to concur in holding the Committee of the whole pending the public hearing. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I just want to say that all of the time that these items have been on the agenda is an opportunity for the public to participate in the budget process. So when we get to the end of the budget process and we're ready to pass the budget, um, I, I would hope that we can all acknowledge that there's been plenty of opportunity for public participation.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Would commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine yay, zero nay.
Nine yay, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to item number six, communication number twenty-two-five dash three-seven-four, Trudy Healy, Commissioner District Eight, requesting council commissioners to look into the concerns regarding urban camping on public streets and refer this matter to the Judiciary Committee and the County Attorney Anne Ruth to develop an ordinance to address this matter. Commissioner Healy.
Thank you, Chief Executive. I want to start with some, some of the stories that I've heard out there from people who have had to deal with transients that are, like, in the parks. There are, a particular one, I'm sure we've all seen him, he's tattooed-faced, attempted kidnapping of a four-year, four-year-old girl out of a park two years ago. And recently, someone on the walking trail said he was sitting on the edge of the Bell Creek in his underwear doing his laundry. A lot of people are afraid to use the walking trail along the creek because there's a lot of transients camped in tents along there. And then when they leave, they leave garbage everywhere. So those are some of the, the personal stories that I've heard from citizens. I was going to say a little bit more. So throughout the United States, urban camping has become an increasing concern for residents and local governments alike. Communities across the country and here in Montana are grappling with the public health, safety, and environmental changes posed by unsanctioned encampments in parks and other public spaces. Several Montana communities have already enacted ordinance to address this issue, such as Bozeman and Missoula. However, Butte Silver Bow currently lacks specific ordinances that directly regulate urban camping. As a result, our ability to respond effectively to related challenges is limited. Last summer, for example, law enforcement responded to more than seventy-five calls regarding urban campers in and around Emma Park alone. In one of these incidences, two individuals were charged with felonies. These situations place a strain not only on public safety resources, but also on our community's sense of security and order. With the recent U.S. Supreme Court decision reinforcing the authority of local governments to regulate urban camping under defined conditions, defined conditions, we have both the opportunity and responsibility to act. I urge your support for the development and passage of a local ordinance that addresses urban camping in a way that protects public health and safety while ensuring compassion and access to appropriate surfaces for vulnerable populations. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to refer to the Judiciary Committee.
We have a motion on second to refer communication number twenty-two-five dash three-seven-four to the Judiciary Committee. Is there anything on the question? County Attorney Anne Ruth.
Chief Executive Gallagher, commissioners, nothing on the question, more of a comment to the commissioners that are on the Judiciary Committee. Prior to this going to Judiciary, I would like everybody to think of the following things. We may enact an ordinance, but we need to also understand, not only in the enforcement of that ordinance, if it is going to be similar to Missoula's or Bozeman's in which there will be have to, there will have to be another division created within Butte Silver Bow to issue camping permits, yeah, street camping permits. Are they going to be thirty days, sixty days? Who's going to reissue those? Who's going to be looking at all of that? Again, if we're going to start looking at arresting people and putting them in jail for camping in public parks, the strain that it will put on Sheriff Lester's Police Force and the jail, these are all things that need to be thought of prior to an ordinance being put in place, and I just wanted to make that statement. So we had something good to discuss at our next judiciary meeting, since we only get thirty minutes.
Thank you, County Attorney Anne Ruth. I'd also like to make a comment just a little bit, and the Bozeman and Missoula have had to really kind of rethink what they've done, because they allow campers in certain areas, and then you have groups of people that are put together, and some are homeless, some have mental health issues, some are criminals, and then you congregate them all together, and they're dealing with those issues there. So those are also other things that we want to think about. There is some suggestion of creating encampments for these places, and, and I think if you get ahold of Bozeman or Missoula, those have not worked, and they have their challenges to those as well. So I, I agree, we, there's issues all over the, the community, across the state, in, in cities and stuff. So I, I just, we need to be thoughtful as we move forward. So, all right. Thank you. So we have a motion on second. Anything else on the question? Could commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine yay, zero nay.
Nine yay, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, communication number twenty-two-five dash three-seven-six, Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting council commissioners authorization to have Chief Executive Gallagher sign a foreign trade zone operations agreement with Phillips Sixty-Six. Director Burns. Oh, Commissioner Thatcher, my fault.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Thank you, Director Burns. This is my first time ever seeing anything about a foreign trade zone operation agreement. So I have a couple of questions on it. I was going through the agreement, and there's a $3,000 one-time application fee. Is that paid to Butte Silver Bow? Is that paid to the federal government? Who, where does that money go?
Commissioner Thatcher, Director Burns.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Thatcher, members of council. That is paid to us as Butte Silver Bow.
Thank you, Director Burns. Follow-up, Commissioner Thatcher.
So then I would assume that the $2,500 a year agreement, not the one-time agreement, but then the $2,500 following that per year also is coming to Butte Silver Bow.
Commissioner Thatcher, Director Burns.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Thatcher, yes, that's true.
Follow-up, Commissioner Thatcher.
Okay, then, a couple of questions on that. So is that a standard amount? So how I understand this, and I, I haven't, I don't, I, I just have kind of researched up on these foreign trade zones. It's a perk for these companies to be able to do something like this, especially with the incredible situation we are in federally with tariffs. So is $2,500 standard, or does that kind of seem like not a lot of money?
Commissioner Thatcher, Director Burns.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher and Commissioner Thatcher. I'm going to defer the standard rate to our attorney, Scott Taylor, in the audience, but I do think that this, it is, it seems like a nominal amount, but we are really taking on no further and no more responsibility. When we applied and established that zone in the early two thousands, it was for, for use by R E C and others within our area. And the kind of district that we created allowed us to have, it's, it's an alternative structure where other entities in the state could apply to be a part of our zone. And so it really, we are not taking any responsibility or liability for their use of our designation. But I would refer the question on the amount to Mr. Scott Taylor, who is in the audience.
Thank you, Director Burns. Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
All right, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher and Commissioner Thatcher. Good question, and so I, let me give you just real quick history. So when we set up the zone, I worked with you back in, 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 Karen, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, the, the issue, there are over three hundred of these foreign trade zones in the United States. And so there are, while they're being used more because of the tariffs now, there's, the balancing act on the annual fee is always, if you make it too high, nobody uses the program, and that happened for a long time. So most, the trend is to lower that fee because, especially in the last ten years, where we're really trying to help out small, medium-sized businesses, and if you raise the fee too high, you just won't have any interest in use of the program. And the, what the program was originally envisioned to do, and it's been around since nineteen thirty-four during the Depression, when tariffs were raised high during Smoot-Hawley legislation, was to help U.S. companies compete with global companies doing the same thing overseas and maybe importing the finished product in the U.S. So twenty-five-hundred is a reasonable fee. There are some that are a little bit more expensive, but right now, since two thousand nine, you have, you know, a couple of companies, R E C Silicon, which is why we worked in partnership with them to set up the, the Gulch, German Gulch Industrial Park, about fifteen hundred acres, so that other companies could take advantage of the program. And then the Port of Montana, which is a warehouse that's available for any smaller company that just wants to store merchandise. And so I think the, the fee's reasonable if your, if your goal is to help small, medium-sized companies and attract companies, because if you have a company, I, I can tell you from my experience, I've, I've set up over six hundred of these, that's all I've done the last twenty-six years around the country in all fifty states. If you have a company looking at two or three communities, and the F T Z is a factor, now it's not always the factor, because there's a lot, you know, site selection list, but if you have one that has a reasonable annual fee of twenty-five-hundred, another one that has ten thousand or twenty thousand, it, it just makes you more competitive, so.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Follow-up, Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I appreciate that, that information. This is all just kind of fascinating to me. So then, you talked about being imported, stored, manufactured, all out there. I'm assuming that that's the representative, you're the representative from Phillips Sixty-Six, maybe? Okay, so I guess, are we plan, are you guys planning on storing, manufacturing? I mean, it's, I see some of it's, like, obviously, oil. Is there any danger, I mean, we don't take on the liability, but is there any danger to anything out there as far as Butte Silver Bow?
Commissioner Thatcher, Mr. Taylor.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Thatcher, I, in this case, the refinery's up in Billings, and so it's, it's an oil refinery. I, I'm not speak, I, I don't represent the company, but I will mention they have been in the program for a couple decades, have multiple sites. Most refinery sites in the United States are in foreign trade zones, and it used to be because of imported crude. Now, a lot of that changed as they became export opportunities opening up, so the imported item wasn't as important. There's still some imported. But as far as safety, they have some of the highest safety regulations. And I can tell you the other thing, and, and just my general familiarity, is U.S. Customs and Border Protection, there are over three hundred offices, but I, I think if you speak to any of them that work with refineries, they feel more, you know, their mission is security, to make sure it's a secure facility because of the tariffs that are owed to the federal government. They feel more secure with a refinery than most other, because they have such a high level of already industry requirements for securities.
And Commissioner Thatcher, I think part of that answer, too, is that they won't be shipping it to Butte, to be shipped out. It will stay from Billings and goes up.
So it'll be stored there, that's, was that what you're saying?
We, no, we will, we will not. It will be out of Billings still. It will never come to Butte.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I could, Chief Executive Gallagher and Commissioner Thatcher, sorry, I didn't, I should have addressed it. So this is, this program, you're, you're more of a regional organization. Just think of it, because it's a federal program, and in the state, there's only, there are a couple of other zones with really no activity. Great Falls and, and Tool County up at the border, I think they have a couple, there's one warehouse activated for storage. But when you service these other companies, they are doing their, kind of their import-export up at that site. It doesn't technically have to come to this community, the product. That's, that's a great question, I should have clarified it. But I do want to mention that the annual fee, the twenty-five-hundred, well, it doesn't seem like, you know, that much once a year. Once a, a subs only gets up and running, like a company like this, they're going to use it for many years, so that's extra revenue every year for the, for the city and county.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank, thank you very much. Director Burns, thank you very much. I'm not sure if any other commissioners have any questions.
Thank you, Director Burns. Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you very much. Thank you for indulging me. That was information I was, did not know. So I would like to make a motion to concurrent place on file, communication number twenty-two-five dash three-seven-six.
We have a motion on second to concurrent place on file, communication number twenty-two-five dash three-seven-six. Is there anything else on the question? Could commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine yay, zero nay.
Nine yay, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to Section Three, Ordinances and Resolutions for Final Reading. Clerk, please read the caption.
A resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-four Western Montana Regional Hazard Imagination Plan updated for the city, county of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I move to place council resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-five on final reading and past, having been deemed fully read at length.
We have a motion on second, placing a resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-five on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine yay, zero nay.
Nine yay, zero nay, motion passes. Moving to calendar and other meeting events, please note dates and times of those, and again, as I noted earlier about the Animal Services Board, I think that's of high interest to a lot of people in the public. And so next, we'll move on to any public comment on any item not on tonight's agenda. Please come forward, state your name and what you would like to speak to us about. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Bernadette Reynolds, and I would like to speak on the concerns in Melrose, Montana.
Do you want to pull that closer to you? Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to address the speeding concerns in Melrose. I have a petition signed and a letter from the community of the ongoing issues of people speeding up Trapper Creek Road to the fishing access, whether it's side-by-sides, vehicles, fishermen. There's a lot of young kids that have moved into our community that live on Trapper Creek Road, including my grandchildren, and we would like speed bumps put in, in between the railroad tracks and the fishing access. We call the cops. We know that the Butte Silver Bow Police Department's really busy, and they can't come out there and patrol all the time, and they, I mean, it's thirty minutes to get to our, our community. So by the time they get there anyways, it's, they're already gone. So I would just like to pass on the letter and the petition, and...
You can hand it to the, to the clerk.
And thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, my name's John Soreich, eighteen-twenty Wilson. Actually, I came up here tonight to listen to the EPA, but I feel compelled to talk about something that's so near and dear to all commissioners' hearts, is fireworks. You know, fireworks, there is eighteen, there's eighteen fireworks stands in Butte Silver Bow this year, and there's, you know, it seems like, you know, two years ago, we talked about it, we talked, and they're not going to be, they're not going to go away. I don't think anybody wants them to go away, but I think there has to be some tweaking, or there needs to be some, let's embrace it. You know, maybe there's ways, you know, there's, each one of those booms we're hearing is fifty bucks going up in the air. You know, that's, there's a lot of money that's being, of the eighteen fireworks stands, more, approximately half of them from out of town. So you have to look at all the money that's leaving this community. You know, I would like to see this body figure out some way to put it, maybe put an impact fee or something, or, you know, we might be able to fund the volunteer firemen, might be able to fund the, the animal control shelter or something, not necessarily to go away. It might make it just a little bit easier to accept every time you hear this sound, if you know at least it's, it's helping somewhere along the line instead of the money walking out the door. Thank you.
Thank you, former Commissioner Soreich. Is there any other public comment not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I would take a motion to adjourn. We have a motion on second, all in favor, signify I. Opposed?